Buenas en Hafadei, Torres Hamzoo. Este escenario público del oficio de Senador Regina Biscolet está ahora llamado a ordenar. Ahora es las 10:36 de la mañana, para el registro y en consonancia con la sección 8107 del capítulo 8, 5 GCA, se enviaron avisos públicos el miércoles, el 12 de febrero de 2020, adhiriendo al aviso de cinco días de trabajo y un segundo aviso público el lunes, el 17 de febrero de 2020, 48 horas antes de hoy. Además, este escenario público fue notificado en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam, Me están acompañando esta mañana son el senador Teresa Terlahi, el senador Kelly Marsh y el senador Will Castro. Y me gustaría agradecer a mis colegas por acompañarme. Antes de proceder a la discusión de los temas en nuestra agenda de escenario público, me gustaría primero proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para todos aquellos que están en asistencia. La conducta de este escenario será la siguiente: Cuando hablen, asegúrense de que el micrófono esté encendido y que estén hablando en el micrófono. El presidente invitará a individuos que han firmado para testificar. Los individuos testificantes serán primero reconocidos por el presidente antes de hablar y establecerán su nombre para fines de registro. La orden de las preguntas comenzará con un panel de senadores que completarán sus líneas de preguntas para cada elemento respectivo de la agenda. Después de la completación de la línea de preguntas del panel, el presidente pondrá preguntas. Cada miembro podrá hacer una pregunta a un individuo testificante por una ronda y será proporcionado otra ronda si es necesario. Las preguntas y testimonios deben confinarse con la sustancia o naturaleza de la agenda. La inflexión personal sobre el carácter o el motivo de cualquier senador o individual testificante no es permitida. Cualquier violación de este reglamento general resultará en la retirada del hámster de la sala pública por parte del Sargento de Héroes de la legislatura de Guam. Señoras y señores, me gustaría comenzar hoy para poner en contexto por qué es tan importante abordar la cuestión del Domo de Runet. La fuerza motriz de la resolución número 300-35 COR es la historia de Guam sobre la lucha con riesgos ambientales y de salud pública y las consecuencias que surgen del uso de sustancias tóxicas. Muchas veces, los verdaderos impactos son entendidos demasiado tarde, como es el caso de los residentes de Guam que contrató cáncer simplemente debido a ser subiendo de la prueba nuclear en las islas Marshall. Los buenos gente de la Asociación Pacífica de los sobrevivientes de radiación, o PARs, conocen esta dificultad muy bien, y es imperativo para nuestro gobierno continuar dando su apoyo a sus esfuerzos para hacer que el pueblo de Guam sea completo. Más malo, el gobierno de Estados Unidos ha mostrado su voluntad de negar la presencia local de químicos dañinos. La evidencia es overwhelming que el agente naranja fue usado aquí en Guam, pero debido a que pasó mucho tiempo entre su presencia y la investigación científica, puede ser difícil probar que cualquier política federal, al contrario, es falsa. La contaminación arriesga nuestra oferta de alimentos, como hemos visto con los PCBs. Arriesga nuestro agua drinkada, como en el caso de PFOS. Así que es porque hemos sufrido tanto y como resultado de saber demasiado poco demasiado tarde y porque tanto está en juego que nos sentimos obligados a actuar para que podamos entender lo que está pasando en el Domo de Runet en la República de las Islas Marshall y para entender si alguna filtración de nuestro vecino puede llevarse a corrientes del océano o a través de especies migratorias a Guam y a su pueblo. Y en este momento, me gustaría agradecer a mis colegas, el senador Clint Rigel, el parlador Tina Munya Barnes, el senador Kelly Marsh Titunow, el senador Joe Sanagasin, el senador Will Castro, el senador Pedro Terlahi, el senador Amanda Shelton y el senador Luis Munia por patrocinar esta medida. Su apoyo muestra el compromiso de esta legislatura hacia la verdadera supervisacia, no tomar el paraíso que heredamos que nos confía a todos por supuesto. Para el beneficio de nuestro público, el Domo de Runet, también llamado Cactus Dome o el túmulo, ha almacenado basura de tierra de seis islas en las islas Marshall donde se realizaron pruebas nucleares estadounidenses. Según un informe investigativo de The Los Angeles Times, la cantidad de tierra radioactiva y basura, incluidas cantidades letales de plutonio, es igual a 3.1 millones de m23, suficiente para llenar 35 piscinas de baile de tamaño olimpico. El Domo de Runet fue encapado en 1980, pero el cráter debajo no estaba lineado correctamente, arriesgando su integridad estructural y filtraciones resultantes debido a los aumentos de nivel de agua. Un síntoma de cambio climático, sin duda, que está sucediendo en las islas Marshall. Esta estructura ha documentado filtraciones en el pasado y se observaron cracks en la capa recientemente como el año pasado. El riesgo es suficientemente serio que el Departamento de Energía de Estados Unidos se requiere de completar un estudio este año que incluirá el pronóstico de los efectos en el medio ambiente en cinco, diez y veinte años. Esta resolución afirma que los servidores públicos de Guam deberían tratar este problema trabajando con sus respectivos compañeros federales y regionales. Comenzar el largo proceso de una política estratégica verdaderamente comprensiva en respuesta a las filtraciones nucleares y exige a todas las entidades y funcionarios de Guam, incluyendo a Ilas Latura, el gobierno de Guam, el gobernador, el fiscal general, delegado al Congreso y sus oficinas, para investigar, planear y mitigar cualquier efecto de las filtraciones actuales o futuras de la Domos de Runet en las islas Marshall. La resolución se dedica aún a abordar esta potencial crisis con una colaborativa, cooperativa y holística "uno Guam" y exige al gobierno federal incluir a Guam en el estudio más reciente de la comisión sobre el Domo de Runet, particularmente cuando se trata de evaluar los futuros impactos ambientales. Dado que ahora conocemos el vínculo directo entre la prueba nuclear en las islas Marshall y los impactos adversos en la salud del pueblo de Guam, los servidores públicos de ambos gobiernos federales y locales deberían llamar a la acción. Hemos sufrido mucho y en algunas ocasiones hemos experimentado el dolor de nuestros queridos y nos sentimos impotentes. En este momento, hay una oportunidad de poder motivarnos. Espero que todos podamos trabajar juntos con este propósito superior en mente. Y en el espíritu de Inafat Maulek, queremos hacer claro que la resolución número 300-35 COR no se pretende arruinar ningún proceso continuo para remediar el daño o compensar víctimas de otros notificados químicos tóxicos que hemos sido expuestos en nuestra historia. Y creo que la forma en que esta medida está actualmente formulada mientras proporciona contexto histórico no hace ninguna afirmación o inclusión que afectará negativamente a cualquier afirmación irresolvida. Pero mi compromiso con los PARs y otros interesados en esto es, si tienen recomendaciones específicas o sugerencias para mejorar la resolución, me apoyaré con gratitud en amendarla para asegurarme de que ninguna de nuestras palabras esté equivocadas y para que podamos unirnos a nuestro objetivo mayor, proteger a nuestro pueblo de los graves y duraderos daños causados por sustancias tóxicas. Y antes de empezar nuestro testimonio público, quiero agradecer públicamente al señor Robert Celestial por proporcionar lenguaje que el comité adoptará para amendar la postura de la resolución sobre la comunicación federal y reemplazar una solicitud del Departamento de Energía para estudiar los efectos de las filtraciones del Domo de Runet, en lugar de pedir que se haga el trabajo por la Academia Nacional de Ciencias. Espero que otros con preocupaciones vean que esto es un verdadero compromiso hacia una "uno Guam" y我相信他们的参与会以同样的信任和 camaradería被认可。Y en este momento, me gustaría llamar al panel de individuos que han firmado para testificar. Por favor, vengan y estén sentados cuando se les llama. También me gustaría reconocer la presencia del senador José Pedro Terlahi a mi izquierda. Gracias, senador, por acompañarnos. Y ahora, en este momento, me gustaría llamar al señor Robert Celestial, al señor Manny Duñez, y también tengo un número de individuos que han firmado, no para dar testimonio oral, que pueden estar presentando testimonio escrito en la conclusión de este escenario, pero solo quiero reconocer su presencia. Mary Cruz, Sarah Floyd, Benita Cardinal, Anthony Demian Kenga, Rosario Perez, Esther Espengel, Corrida Iglesias, Vicentia Royal, Vicky Mesa, Kathy Rivera Castro, Antonio Y creo que eso es todo. Señor Celestial, el sofá es tuyo.
Gracias, presidenta, senador Lee y honrados senadores. Tengo una breve presentación de PowerPoint, si me permiten antes de mi testimonio. Vayan adelante, por favor. Bien, esto es el "Veteranos de limpieza". Esta es la congresista May, con la que hemos estado trabajando durante muchos años. Su personal, Jackie Shea, hablamos diariamente, enviamos un correo electrónico, ¿qué está pasando? Siguiente, por favor. Esto es el "Toto". Si notan, hay aproximadamente 40 islas alrededor. Estuvimos estacionados en las islas norteñas de Lojua, y esta es una gran detonación de bombas nucleares que fueron probadas allí en 1946. Siguiente, por favor. Sí, esta es una antigua fotografía de mí, el Sargento de Blois y el señor Siswiko. Esta es la isla Lojua. Detonaron 43 bombas nucleares allí, y en 1977 decidieron enviar 4.000 de nosotros allí y limpiar la radiación y construir el Domo de Runet. No sabíamos a qué nos dirigíamos. Eso es yo a la izquierda con el sombrero, y ese es el señor Blois con el cuchillo de coco. Sé que el cuchillo de coco distrae a mucha gente. Parecen mirar cómo grande es esa cosa. Y en la parte inferior está donde vivimos y el señor Siswiko. Y esa isla está justo por encima del Domo de Runet. Es tan cerca de la isla Coco de Guam. Así es. Siguiente, por favor. Y así es como viajamos a trabajar de una isla a otra, es sobre LCUs, utilidades de aterrizaje. Y ese es nuestro helicóptero metaférico, y estos son los basuras que enterramos en el domo. Siguiente, por favor. Y así quería mostrar en 1946 y luego las pruebas que los otros veteranos atómicos tuvieron que pasar. De hecho, estaban allí y miraron esta cosa detonando. Siguiente, por favor. Y así es muy importante saber que en 1958 detonaron la bomba nuclear de 18 kiloton en la isla Runet. Siguiente, por favor. Este es el cráter que hizo. En 1977, mi primer trabajo fue, aterrizamos en la playa de la isla Runet y parecía así. Pero en nivel terrenal parece como un pozo de agua. Mi trabajo con los otros soldados fue secar este cráter. Estábamos aquí en polvo y todo, y ni siquiera sabíamos qué está haciendo. Y así, siguiente, por favor. Quería mostrarle a la gente cuánto llevó. Llevó tres años. Esta es la mitad de la completación del domo. Siguiente, por favor. Y esta es la completación. Esos pequeños puntos allí son personas sentadas en el domo. Así es grande este domo. Siguiente, por favor. Bien, y eso es todo. Muchas gracias. Eso concluye. Esto fue para otra presentación, pero muchas gracias. Estoy tratando de averiguar cuál debería leer, este o mi testimonio. Creo que tienen una copia de esto. Bien, si pueden. No iba a leer este, pero creo que es muy importante entender los cambios que hemos acordado. Esto fue del secretario de Energía en 2004. Fue de la honrada Madeline Burdahlu, de la Casa de Representantes. Dice: "Querido congresista Burdahlu..." Debería haber sido la congresista. "Gracias por la carta de 2 de diciembre de 2003 expresando preocupaciones emitida por la legislatura nacional de Guam y la Asociación Pacífica de los sobrevivientes de radiación respecto a la posible contaminación de Guam por el programa de pruebas nucleares estadounidenses en el Pacífico. El Departamento de Energía ha estado al tanto de esta preocupación desde 2001, cuando el congresista Robert Underwood contactó el departamento en busca de respuestas a preguntas similares en nombre de su constituyente, el señor Robert Celestial, presidente de la Asociación Pacífica de los sobrevivientes de radiación. En ese momento, el departamento tenía dos contratistas trabajando en las islas Marshall. El instituto de investigación de salud en el Pacífico estaba entregando cuidados médicos a los personas expuestas a la falla bajo la dirección de un médico, que era el Dr. Neil Palfax, con más de 20 años de experiencia proporcionando cuidados médicos en las islas Marshall. El Departamento de Energía, Lawrence Livermore, laboratorio nacional, está ayudando a los personas a resaltar la isla Rongalep y ha realizado estudios ambientales en las islas Marshall durante varios años. Nosotros preguntamos a los contratistas, uno de ellos era el Dr. Terry Hamilton, para examinar la lista de enfermedades que el señor Slush proporcionó al congresista Underwood y para revisar datos sobre materiales radioactivos que se desprendieron en Guam. La información fue resumida y presentada al congresista Underwood. Los hallazgos se aplican hoy y los informes están encadenados para su información. Podría proporcionar eso si lo quieren. El Departamento de Energía no tiene información sobre la liberación de materiales radioactivos en aguas de Guam a partir de barcos de mar de descontaminación. Esa información está bajo el agente de defensa. Si tienen cualquier pregunta adicional sobre la falla después de revisar los informes, por favor, contacten al señor Rick DeRoi. Esto fue firmado por Spencer Agram. Esa frase, "El Departamento de Energía no tiene ninguna información", es una mentira outright, porque no tenían la información que teníamos. Investigando durante más de cuatro años en su base de datos, el Departamento de Energía, y algunos de ustedes ya han oído lo que me pasó después del testimonio de la Academia Nacional de Ciencias, que fui llevado al edificio de Foro y pregunté dónde obtuve mi información. Y gracias a Dios, dije de su sitio web. Así que el Departamento de Energía está diciendo outright, no tenemos ninguna información. Pero luego teníamos documentos desclasificados de que los barcos estaban secos aquí en Guam. Teníamos la información de que la falla estaba aquí. Teníamos al lieutenant Bert Schreiber quien testificó que sus controles Geiger estaban despegando las escalas aquí en Guam. El que realmente sabe esto es el senador Will Castro, porque escribió el reporte de 97 páginas con Sean Briscoe. Él sabe lo que pasó a la gente de Guam en nuestro panel de azules ribas. Así que es muy importante por qué sugiero que en lugar de que el Departamento de Energía haga ningún estudio para Guam, debería ser la Academia Nacional de Ciencias, porque este es el reporte después de que volví de la Academia Nacional, que lo declaró, aunque el Departamento de Energía dijo que nada pasó en Guam, envié estos documentos a la Academia Nacional de Ciencias y ellos desobediieron a lo que dijeron y dijeron que sí, Guam es eligible para recibir compensación porque los residentes de Guam fueron expuestos a la falla medible de las pruebas en las islas Pacíficas. Así que aprecio el tiempo. Y si puedo, me gustaría leer mi testimonio. Hafadei Mananas Izuis, presidenta de Regina Biscolet, honrados senadores. Mi nombre es Robert Manuel Celestial, presidente actual de la Asociación Pacífica de los sobrevivientes de radiación. Sé que cada uno de ustedes se preocupa por lo que hemos estado logrando durante los últimos 19 años para la gente de Guam. La atención médica gratuita y $150,000 es lo que el Congreso de Estados Unidos está propuesto este año en dos presupuestos congresionales para la gente de Guam. Uno en el Senado de Estados Unidos, el Senado 947, y el otro en la Casa de Representantes, el H. R. 3783. Somos agradecidos por todo su apoyo en el pasado y oramos que hoy, en el futuro y en el futuro, nuestras relaciones puedan continuar creciendo. Soy el primero en admitir que hago errores y trato de no juzgar a nadie cuando las cosas corren mal. Es nuestra esperanza que podamos salir de este tema con una comprensión mutua, que pedir al Departamento de Energía incluir a Guam en cualquier estudio, en su estudio del Domo de Runet en las islas Marshall, no es en el mejor interés de la gente de Guam. El Domo de Runet en las islas Marshall ha estado filtrando durante muchos años y numerosos informes han sido publicados sobre este tema. Como miembro de la Asociación Nacional de los veteranos atómicos, sé y entiendo lo que está en juego cuando se trata del Domo de Runet. Fui parte de la limpieza en el "Toto" en 1977, y como soldado joven en el ejército de Estados Unidos, con más de 4.000 otros personal militar, vivimos en Lojua y trabajamos en Runet durante tres años para construir ese domo. Fuemos expuestos a altos niveles de radiación ionizante. He estado trabajando con la congresista May de Nueva York y su personal durante muchos años tratando de pasar la legislación para los veteranos de limpieza. El 13 de septiembre de 2018 recibí una invitación del congresista Mike Boas y la congresista Elizabeth SD a una reunión redonda en el comité de la Cámara de Representantes de las Affaires de los Veteranos. Fui invitado a discutir cómo ayudar a los veteranos de limpieza. Sin embargo, no pude asistir porque no tenía los fondos para viajar a Washington DC en ese momento. Sin embargo, fui capaz de tener a mis compañeros veteranos de limpieza, el señor Harry Daniels, Ken Brownlow y John Boehner, asistir al escenario del comité. Senadores, hemos hecho grandes esfuerzos y contactos en Washington DC para ayudarnos en mover nuestra agenda para la gente de Guam, para que puedan recibir los mismos beneficios en el programa de compensación de la exposición a la radiación que se dio a los residentes de Utah, Arizona y Nevada. Las academias nacionales de ciencias han escrito un informe al Congreso en 2005, y este es el libro aquí, este es el informe aquí, si quieren leerlo. La gente de Guam fue expuesta a la falla medible de los terrenos del Pacífico, que son las islas Marshall, y que los residentes de Guam deberían ser eligible para recibir compensación como subyacentes. No queremos distraer en este momento de lo que hemos logrado, y que estamos más cerca de que nunca haya pasado el congreso de la ley del senador Mike Crapo, el Senado 947, y el congresista Ben Ray Luhans, el H. R. 3783, para incluir a Guam en el Acto de la compensación de la exposición a la radiación de 2019-2020. No puedo expresar lo peligroso que es tu solicitud de que Guam sea parte de un estudio del Departamento de Energía en este momento. En 2004, este gobierno se negó a ayudarnos en financiar nuestro viaje a Washington DC para testificar antes del comité de investigación de efectos de la radiación del Consejo de Energía y nosotros, la Asociación Pacífica de los sobrevivientes de radiación, tuvimos que levantar los fondos para enviarme y también pagar el viaje y alojamiento de un médico de salud, el señor William Brady, para testificar antes de la Academia Nacional de Ciencias en una invitación del Consejo de Investigación de Efectos de la Radiación. En 2006, fuimos invitados por la Cámara de Representantes de la legislatura para presentar nuestros hallazgos para ayudarlos a unirse a nosotros como subyacentes. En 2007, el señor Tony Titunfong y yo fuimos invitados a asistir a la conferencia de subyacentes en Boise, Idaho, donde nos conocimos y construimos una relación duradera con la señora Toni Henderson, presidente de los Downwinders de Idaho, la señora Tina Cordova, presidente de los Downwinders de Nuevo México. Han sido estas dos mujeres y su grupo los que nos han incluido en ambos presupuestos del Senado y de la Cámara. En 2018, hace dos años, trabajando juntos con nuestros socios de subyacentes, pudimos obtener una invitación del senador Grassley para testificar ante el comité judicial del Senado sobre el Senado, el 947. De nuevo tuvimos que pagar todos nuestros gastos con nuestros fondos gubernamentales. Uno de nuestro gran apoyo es el senador Teresa Terlahi cuando me acompañó a Washington DC para testificar ante el comité judicial del Senado en 2018. Fue a nuestra solicitud y ella fue instrumental en trabajar conmigo, como hemos hecho con numerosos senadores, congresistas y congresistas, y especialmente construyendo relaciones con los personal, de los cuales muchos eran abogados. Hoy continuamos trabajando con nuestros amigos en Washington DC, comunicándonos y planeando, de los cuales muchos, y planeando para el próximo escenario comité, que creemos que será en abril o mayo de este año, gracias a Dios. Estos son solo algunos logros que nuestro grupo, la Asociación Pacífica de los sobrevivientes de radiación, ha hecho durante los últimos años. Hoy pedimos a cada senador de la legislatura de Guam 35, 35, unirse a nosotros y trabajar con nosotros para lograr estas metas para la gente de Guam y asegurar que estemos incluidos en el Acto de la compensación de la exposición a la radiación de 2020. Humildemente pido a cada senador de la legislatura de Guam 35, reconsiderar y no tener la resolución 35, 335, correr más allá de este escenario público. Con respeto, Robert y Celestial, presidente, y escuché anteriormente que trabajamos juntos y que se ha hecho un cambio. No dirigiremos nuestros esfuerzos al Departamento de Energía, dirigiremos nuestros esfuerzos a las academias nacionales de ciencias. Y quiero agradecerles, senador Lee, y a todos los senadores por estar aquí. Y quiero especialmente agradecer a todos nuestros miembros, no todos ellos, porque muchos de ellos están en casa, pero los que hicieron llegar esta mañana, todos nuestros miembros, mi amigo Manny Duñez. De hecho, fueron mis compañeros de clase, de primer grado. Gracias. Siswos Massey.
Siswos Massey, señor Celestial. En este momento, también me gustaría reconocer la presencia del senador Sabina Flores Perez, que está aquí, y gracias, senador, por acompañarnos. Señor Duñez, el sofá es tuyo.
Buen día, senadores, madame presidenta. Mi nombre es Manuel P. Duñez II. Estoy aquí como ciudadano privado. En completa disclosure, crecí con Robert Celestial en Agania. Lo mismo con los hermanos de la familia Sangio, que es muy activo de la Federación de la Festa de la Fútbol. Supongo que tuvimos un mal agua en Agania porque somos todos bastante activos. Somos casi nadie, pero somos muy activos en el comunidad, y cada evento y actividad que tenemos es para apoyar a nuestra comunidad, y creo que eso debe ser aplaudido con el señor Celestial después de todo lo que ha pasado. Tenemos carreras similares. Ambos se unieron al ejército, pero él fue castigado, yo recibí recompensas. Sí, tuviste radiación, yo no. Pero en completa disclosure, crecí con Robert, ambos venimos del servicio. Esos eran los buenos días. Pero de vuelta a los centros de la cuestión, senadores, apoyo a la intención del proyecto y especialmente después de escuchar al señor Celestial. Como dije, escucho la opinión de todos para poder tomar una decisión informada. Sin embargo, simplemente no deseo que este proyecto haga que los aguas se hundan en los esfuerzos de este grupo. Creo que la intención del proyecto es admirable, pero creo que debe mantenerse separado como entidad en sí mismo para estudiar los futuros efectos del domo o del túmulo o lo que sea. Y solo para agregar a tu historia sobre las seis islas y todo el basura, también tomaron la materia de Arizona y la dejaron allí. Así que eso es aún peor, porque tomaron toda su país principal para limpiar su acto y contaminar nuestra área. Y todo lo que he leído, solo me dieron dos horas para estudiar todo esto. Me llamó esta mañana o me mandó un texto y solo con un rápido estudio, y estoy bastante inteligente ahora sobre lo que está pasando. Pero nuevamente, desearía que tomáramos un paso atrás y escuchen lo que está recomendando y veamos qué serán los impactos. Y quiero compartirlo con ustedes porque vengo del océano. Recuerden, estamos hablando de sube. ¿Y cómo va el agua suba? Las corrientes vienen del este al oeste. Entienden eso. Y la única barrera principal entre el este y el oeste son las islas Mariana. Son las únicas islas de islas de mar elevadas que viajan de norte a sur por encima del equador. Así que cualquier cosa que atraviese es como una valla. Seríamos golpeados por ella. Hace diez, quince años, hubo un estudio de tortugas de mar verdes que mostró que las tortugas juveniles de las islas Marshall viajaron de allí a nuestra región, cosechaban alrededor de nuestra área. Es por eso que si alguna vez van a las viejas casas de Chomor, todas las cuchillas de tortugas son pequeñas. Siempre comimos las jóvenes. Cuando atraviesan Micronesia, solo comen las grandes después de que coloquen huevos. Pero lo que estoy tratando de señalar es que después de todo esto de cosas nucleares y estas pequeñas tortugas que vienen aquí, que nuestras familias han comido en el pasado y que la gente en Micronesia continúa consumiendo, pueden ser llenas de radiación de estas filtraciones, y nadie está mirando eso. Ustedes no entienden que hubo un estudio de coral hecho en la riqueza doble. La riqueza doble está en el lado occidental de nuestra isla. Es un hermoso prestigio. It's a beautiful, pristine area. There was a spike in the early 1960s of radiation. Why? That radiation level was a thousand times greater than the history of the study in Double Reef. But nobody cared. Nobody looked at that big spike and what caused it. On the western side, all the bombing has been done on the eastern side. So any radiation peak should be on the eastern side of our island because we got the marble cliffs and all the cliff line to protect the rest of the western side. But there was a spike in 1962, I think. So it makes you wonder whether a submarine blew up over there or somebody decided to fire a test missile since they were still doing it. So I just want to clear the issue that I support what Robert's doing, and I always will. Like I said, we come from the same background. We have the passion, we have the heart. All these people back here have the passion, heart. I bet you none of them even have a Ph.D., but they have the passion to protect our people and work for the cause. And I've always said, anytime you find a local person who is very interested in pursuing an issue that is detrimental to our people, I suggest you hug that person and embrace that person. And if he's asking for financial help to go to Congress every year, I suggest this legislature do it. They supply him that fund, supply the association, so they can fight for us if nobody else will. And I thank Senator Terlahey for being able to go and visit Washington because it gives some credence to the fact that they're attempting to protect and support our people. I'm going to try and make it real quick. You know, may I talk a lot? Downwind, green sea turtle, the spike in radiation, I think I've basically covered it. But at the end of the day, we had this quagmire with the World War II compensation where it was introduced, and then we had to reintroduce another bill to, because we had to fix this, and then you guys did it locally. Well, why are we doing that anyways? It's our money. It's our tax Section 30 money. You guys just introduce a legislation that every year you pay $10 million of that money to compensate everybody. You know, why do you have to ask Congress? That's not their business. They don't want to help. They're not going to help us with the radiation. I don't care what study you put into this and who does it. They already said it. Marshals, tough luck. It's our, we caused the problem, but it's on your water. It's on your land, so it's your problem. The federal government's not going to help us. Federal government denied us, ordered dump. They keep fighting us on everything, and we keep taking it. Senators, I'm going to tell you right now, I've dealt on the international, national level with the governments. And if you don't open your mouth and you don't stand up for what you feel is right, you're never going to get anywhere. You might as well just continuously lay down. Okay? Because for fisheries, I believe I'm an expert. For radiation, I believe Robert's the expert. But at the end of the day, if you don't fight for your rights, you don't fight for our people, there's nothing going to happen. And I, like I said, I applaud you for, I applaud the committee and all the people in this, for this effort, but please, clean that up and make sure it's only for a study regarding the leakage. Don't contaminate the problem of the downwind fallout. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duainius. And now, Ms. Castro.
Buenas tardes, Senator Regina Biscoli and senators of the 35th Guam Legislature. My name is Kathy Rivera Castro, and I'm a resident of Mongmung. I'm also a mother of a child, my youngest son, on his cancer journey. I'm appearing before you in opposition to Resolution 300-35-COR. I'm a community advocate and volunteer for several organizations that promote creating a healthier island community and improving the quality of life for our people. One such organization I wish to highlight is the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, or PARs, of which I serve on the Board of Directors. This organization, led by its president, Mr. Robert Celestial, who has diligently worked on ensuring that the people of Guam will be included in the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act of 2020, or RICA. This endeavor has spanned over 19 years. President Celestial has led the charge, along with the members of PARs over the years, to make Guam be acknowledged as downwinders. He has even been invited to testify before Congress on our behalf. For over 70-plus years, the plight of our people has not been recognized. This decision has immensely impacted the health of the people of Guam. Exposure has not only affected our people, but our environment, our water, our land, our sea, and our air. The journey has been one that was not without challenges of all sorts, but we are here. The time is now, and we are at the closest we have ever been for inclusion. The finite deadline for the inclusion in RICA is 2022. We are in a definite timeline to ensure that our people are acknowledged and compensated for the exposure. Please note that on Guam, cancer is the second-leading cause of mortality. This disease has taken all too many of our loved ones. One person is diagnosed with cancer per day, and one person dies of cancer every two and a half days. These deaths, every 2.5 days, are cancer-related deaths versus deaths from other causes or comorbid conditions. In a pamphlet published by PARs, 19 cancers, but not limited to, have been identified as having a link to radiation exposure. The Guam Cancer Registry data during the period of 2008 to 2012 has shown that at least 60% of new cancer cases and cancer deaths comprise of the cancers compensable under RICA. This is an alarming statistic. Senator, this is my, your, our loved ones, and this is our home and our people who have been exposed to ionizing radiation due to the measurable fallout from atmospheric testing of nuclear weapons in the Pacific. The compensation afforded, along with the lifetime of medical care and the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, will definitely assist those individuals in our community to have access to health care that would afford them the quality of life that everyone deserves and possibly save some lives. Madam Chair and sponsors of this resolution, along, and sponsor of this resolution, along with your co-sponsors and colleagues, it is my earnest prayer that each of you consider any further movement of this resolution. Although this resolution, as well-intended as it is, and I commend you and your colleagues for wanting to ensure that our people's plights are recognized, requesting for the inclusion of Guam in the Roonit Dome Report is not in the best interest of our people. The dome has been leaking for many years, as there are articles that have been published to attest to this. However, requesting for the inclusion of Guam will possibly delay any further movement of our requests for inclusion in RICA. This will be a great injustice to our people, and this will give the federal government an opportunity to delay a decision regarding Guam, and should the deadline pass, we will have lost our opportunity for inclusion, thus losing the assistance so much needed by our loved ones. The One Guam approach you highlighted in the heading of your resolution is so poignant. As to how we all want what is best, we have been privileged and blessed, and to have Senate members in the United States stand not behind us but with us in our mission. And I ask you to come, join us in our quest for the inclusion in RICA. Let us unite, let us walk in unison, and show those in the Senate that we are truly One Guam. The financial burden of cancer is enormous, the physical challenges are many, and the need for assistance and support is great. Our people have always been faced with the hardship of access to comprehensive cancer care due to our distance and from specialty cancer treatment centers, so they are often faced with the additional burden of having to travel far to access specialized care. This in itself adds additional financial implications on top of the already high costs of cancer care and treatment. Having Guam included in the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act will truly benefit our people who will be able to avail of compensation to assist them in their cancer journey. Our people have waited way too long for the inclusion. Let us together do what we can to ensure we are included. We, the members of the Pacific Association of Radiation Survivors, stand united with our cancer community. We welcome you. Come, join us and stand with them. Acknowledge them. Let them know that their suffering is not without recognition and without cause. Remind them that their life matters to each of us, and we will together do what we can to assist them. Thank you once again for allowing me this opportunity to appear before you and to make my voice heard. Sina Maasi, Zan Ben-Deshawn.
Sina Maasi. At this time, are there any other members of the audience that would like to testify on this measure, on this resolution? If not, then I do have a question for Ms. Castro. So I just wanted to note for the record that I was very heavily in support of the RICA resolution that was passed by this body. I attended the public hearing right here in the public hearing room, spoke in favor of it at the public hearing, spoke in favor of it on the floor, and voted to pass it. So I absolutely am behind you in the efforts that you're attempting to move forward with the RICA resolution, and I have never spoke in opposition of either Senate Bill 947 or H.R. 3783. I think that's obviously something that we're all trying to push forward. With the changes that the committee has agreed to make alongside Mr. Celestial, do you still oppose this resolution with those changes?
Forgive me, Senator. My biggest concern is that we have until 2022, and we have been pursuing inclusion for over 19 years. And one of the biggest issues, I believe, that is concerning to the federal government, and this is a personal opinion, is the fact that cancer is very prominent here in Guam, and the cost is going to be enormous to them. And this might just give them an opportunity to say, well, you know, we need to do the study, we, let's hold off a little bit in including Guam, and in pursuing the study, we might miss that timeline of 2022, and then that's it, we're done.
So the request would be to ask the National Academy of Sciences to update their study that they've already done for us?
Correct.
So in my mind, that would mean a larger inclusion of our people?
Just hoping that it'll be done in a timely manner so that we don't miss that deadline. My biggest concern is not missing that deadline of 2022 for inclusion. Mr. Robert Celestial has moved this bill in the Senate and in Congress, and we've never come this close. We are, as we've said in PARs, we're at the door. We're just waiting to be invited in, and we've got, I mean, 2020 has, we're almost halfway through the year, so we've got like, you know, very little time left, and we all know that studies take a long time to be vetted. So as I said, my concern is just missing that timeline because our people have waited way too long.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Celestial?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Hopefully, I pray that the agreement that we worked on is to not have the Department of Energy do the study or even have Guam included in their study on the dome. It would be to go before or have a resolution asking the National Academy of Science in a separate study to, for Guam, because this is, this, in 2004, when I went there, this is the 2005 study for Guam, Montana, Idaho, Navajo Nation, New Mexico. This is the study. This is the study that the National Academies of Science wrote that the washdowns were done on Guam. The letter I wrote, I read to you earlier, said the Department of Energy has no information about washdowns on Guam. So it's very important that the National Academies be the ones to do any kind of studies on Guam and not the Department of Energy. Thank you, Senator Biscoli.
Thank you very much. Senator Pito?
Kathy, I just want to be, make this clear. You're in opposition of 335.
In moving forward for Guam to be included in this study...
I strongly believe that what you're trying to say is that you're just compromising it.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just want to thank Bob. We have talked, when I ran for Lieutenant Governor, with Angel Santos.
Yes.
And along with Will Castro and Mr. Duainius, I've talked to you about some of the issues that you brought up regarding the contamination of the waters around Guam. So I want to just thank all of you for giving us your insight, and I'm pretty sure that I'm working on that. You've given me the, you've given me the issues that we need to work on, and that's going to be coming out pretty soon. And Bob, thank you very much for continuing your hard work and your research, and hopefully we can just get that compensation to our people. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy.
First of all, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity, the invitation to participate in a bipartisan fashion on an issue that really is outside the scope of local politics. Ms. Castro, right, Kathy, she prefers to be called Kathy, I heard your testimony, and I will be conferring with my colleagues on a good middle ground, but my statements are much more relevant, in my opinion, from my perspective, from a much more international, macro perspective, even when considering protecting our local interests. And so if I may just enter some comments into the record. All too often, we tend to isolate ourselves. I'm not speaking primarily to your testimony, but just some general sentiments based on my limited experience here in the legislature, and even with you, Mr. Celestial, having worked for the late Senator Angel Santos, we tend to have a very myopic view of what Guam's relations are with our neighbors. And oftentimes, and to my chagrin and to our detriment, we draw lines in the sand that reinforce these artificial boundaries between our jurisdictions. And so I rise in full support of this resolution with the chair and the colleagues who have co-sponsored it because there's a much more international tenor and historical injustice that needs to be addressed. And I want to go through the rest of my points to address, Ms. Castro, because I would never do it at the expense of the people of Guam and the Marianas, and especially of this great Chamor nation. But I really believe there's a happy medium here. Mr. Duainius, you highlighted something that actually I was very naive, I was very ignorant of, and I want to close my statements by acknowledging that and finding a way we can incorporate that tidbit into the early study that we did 20 years ago. Thank you. By the way, everyone who's here, who's in attendance, I see a former senator, I see some folks from the Southern Villages, Mr. Celestial himself, the gentleman who's carried that cross, thank you for the credit of the 97-page draft.
You deserve it.
You make me look good, but I want everybody who's able to know and hear my voice that it was you who brought those luggages to Senator Santos's office, and I had the blessed privilege of collating and editing, and that was my contribution. And I do thank you for edifying the work, but let everyone know that it was you and the late Dr. Walter Chris Perez, with the support of former Speaker Mark Forbes, and of course, the late Senator Angel Santos, who produced a seminal piece that has served as a solid foundation for national and local policy. You did that, and I thank you for the privilege to participate in that endeavor.
You're welcome.
Okay. I want to also state, Madam Chair, that it's important that we're here to remind the rest of the world because what we say here on Guam has implications. We're going to demand it and require it, not just for ourselves, but for everybody listening, to include our regional partners and our international neighbors. This is, this is a case study of a grave environmental catastrophe, of a historical injustice, of human trauma. I don't want to rehash all the reports that have come out. I mean, the book you highlighted, Robert, is one example, but I'm here today, and I'm so passionate about this issue because so many years later, as Mr. Duainius highlighted, it's so relevant to Guam because if in fact it's true, and I'll take his word for it as a lifelong fisherman, that species have been contaminated, migratory ocean species have been contaminated, that was way beyond the scope of the work that I had undertaken, even with the late senator. And I think if that remains true today, then I really believe that we have to weigh in on that conversation. And so I want to have another sidebar. I would petition the support of the good chairperson, Senator Biscoli, to have that. With that said, the science is irrefutable in terms of the impact it's had on the environment. Nobody, no one with any respectable credential in the United States or on the planet can refute the fact... refute the fact that those five dozen detonations have devastated islands. That tomb that was referred to, that's not colloquial, that's, that's an acknowledged, acceptable term in the community of environmental justice, that it is a nuclear coffin.
And that's why we're here, Senator, if you may.
Yes, please.
It's not... We're not denying all that. Matter of fact, we've proven that. What we're here is to protect our interest with RICA, is that, that, this resolution, 335, is asking the Department of Energy to include Guam. That's what we're opposing. We're not opposing the study of the Runet Dome. They can do that. It's a law. They passed it in the NDA report, that the Department of Energy do the study. Now, if Congress had said, National Academies of Science, go do the study on the Runet Dome, then I'd approve, I'd agree. But our opposition is, don't get involved with the Department of Energy. We've had past experiences where, even my experiences with scientists, is that they are looking for the best interests of their government. And you're talking about the Marshall Islands, we're talking about FSM, we're talking about the Marianas Islands. We've all been exposed, we've all been contaminated. Our opposition is that don't get Guam included in that study. That's all we're asking. If we want to study, then let's go to the National Academies of Science, please. Thank you.
Mr. Celestial, I just did want to ask a clarifying question. So, RICA is specifically, uses the term downwind, is that correct? Is there any indication, I mean, not in the review that I've done of any of the RICA bills, does it make mention of downstream?
No.
Or any effects of our water sources?
In this book, you will find all the information pertaining to downwind and jet streams and water currents. The water currents do come to Guam. Okay, you could take a look at this or order one.
Understood, but in terms of RICA, in terms of RICA, it's downwind only?
Yes. No. Both. This study was done. I need to interject this real quick. These are the conclusions, there's two conclusions. I always promote one conclusion, not two, the both conclusions. And there's a reason why. But I'll read both conclusions to you. The first conclusion is for the downwinders, us, the whole entire. It said, "As a result of its analysis, the committee, this committee of scientists, concludes that Guam did receive measurable fallout from atmospheric testing of nuclear weapons in the Pacific. Residents of Guam during that period should be eligible for compensation under RICA in a way similar to that of persons considered to be downwinders." Okay, that's the first conclusion. Second conclusion, and I have to explain it because a lot of people, even myself, even the scientists couldn't understand it. The committee concludes that available evidence does not show, the evidence that we provided, me and Dr. Brady, does not show that a general population on Guam was subjected to unwarranted radiation exposure resulting from the decontamination of naval vessels. Persons who have proof of their employment by a federal agency or contract in the process of decontaminating ships affected by fallout are already eligible for compensation as onsite participants. So Guam has already been approved as onsite participants. But the general population, because we asked if Agate and Santa Rita and Marisu could be compensated. But these scientists went ahead and said, they didn't have the available evidence. Does not show that a general population of Guam. So there's two, you have downwind and the wash downs. So when you ask, does the jet stream come here? Of course it does, even in this report. So we've been contaminated ever since 1946 to 62. And my main concern is yes. It's very important to understand that, to do a study, right? This study was done 2005. They concluded that we need to be compensated through the radiation exposure comes. But to involve us in a study with the Department of Energy, I disagree. The reason why, and you said, why do we draw the sand and stop here? No, because I've explained on the radio that the politics with the FSM and the Marshall Islands is great, is far greater than our understanding. And I didn't want to bring that up today. I said on the radio that FSM almost broke away with their compact with the United States recently, a year ago. That is why Secretary Pompeo went to the FSM last year, is to hold the peace. For the first time, the FSM and the Marshall Islands were invited to see President Trump. Why? Because they built a relationship with China. And China wants the FSM and the Marshall Islands. Did you know that in 2016, the Marshall Islands passed a law that anyone not in the Marshall Islands couldn't vote for the president? Yes. And Hildy Heine was fighting against it because that's why she lost her seat, because the Marshallis in the United States and Hawaii and everyone, if they weren't in the Marshall, lived in the Marshall, they couldn't vote for president. And that's why President Caboa is now the president of the Marshall Islands. If we don't know that as leaders, then we're seeing a small myopic picture like the good Senator Will Castro has said. But no, we have looked at the greater picture. We're looking at the greater picture that Guam be included in the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act to help our people. And by us including with the Department of Energy and saying, hey, look at us, no, we don't want you to look at us, we're, our ship is going this way, don't veer the ship that way, please, by the grace of God, help us. And we ask you, and that's why we say, join us, because our vision is this way. And we do need a study by the National Academy of Science, but let it be after we are included in RICA. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. And I agree that we do need a study by the National Academy of Sciences because I also, you know, my, one of my main concerns, and Mr. Duennius brought it up as well, is, you know, to really understand whether any of the leaks from the Runet Dome may be carried through ocean currents or affect these migratory species like you were mentioning about the turtles. And so, you know, I hate to use the term, but we're just sitting ducks here and we don't know, it's really difficult for us to tell. And you were mentioning that the science that they have is inconclusive. So it's really important for us to go forward. And I think the National Academy of Sciences would be a good way to go, to try to get a little bit more information and have localized information as well. So again, I thank you. Senator Trellahi, do you have any questions?
Were you trying to say something? Were you raising your hand or no?
If I may, Madam Chair, I just wondered if we could just address this whole issue in a two-prong approach. One, separate, within the same resolution, but a separate issue of the downwind. So that remains intact. And then in the other half of the resolution, we address the future impacts of the tomb.
Mr. Duennius, just again to reiterate, this body has already passed, discussed and passed a resolution in support of RICA, and that was several months, I think a year ago. And so we've already moved on that.
Just not, like I said, just not muddy the water. The other point I want to make real quick regarding the turtle, the reason why I brought it up is that since that report was done 10 years ago, the turtle has received a petition to upgrade itself, get an upgrade on the Endangered Species Act, which is not, to me, never been justified. But they did it to protect that if our people, US citizens, somehow get proven that eating the turtles causes cancer to us because of radiation, because of their origin, origins, then I think that's why they upgraded it to endangered rather than leave it a threatened where it's all around the world, it's still threatened. That's made that point.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to close out. Mr. Celestial, Mr. Duennius, Kathy, thank you for your testimony. To be clear for the record, I don't think any one of my colleagues would do anything to compromise ongoing efforts for just compensation for downwinders. So I think we heard you loud and clear. But I also want to include in my final statement, Madam Chair, that I do support any other initiative that would expand the radiological surveillance programs beyond the shores of the affected islands, which is intimated in one of those studies. So please, just so we know that if there's an opportunity to bifurcate or pass the existing resolution without compromising what's already in motion, I think the good Chair here with input from her colleagues can reach that compromise. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Lee.
Thank you. And Senator Trellahi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for those testifying and those who are here today also in regards to this I'm trying to figure out what to say. I'm not exactly sure either. It's on its face, I mean, Senator Lee's correct that every senator has been in support of the RICA, passage of RICA to include Guam for this term, last term. And since I think you started actually getting the legislatures to, or encouraging the legislatures to pass resolutions on RICA, right? When they start to put bills in. But prior to putting the bills into Congress, there was a lot of work behind the scenes, as you described in prior testimonies before us. And when you tell your story, you describe the work that went into getting people to even look at it, to believe that it had actually happened, that to produce air patterns or something like that. I remember seeing things like this, to find eyewitnesses who, who, when you took, when then Guam was able to take its case before any panel, that they, they had something substantive to prove to them. And maybe it's a little confusing because on this face, you know, to do another study seems perfectly harmless. But I think if, but I can hear your concern and I share your concern, that nothing in Congress is on its face, and especially when it comes to contamination on Guam. And so I guess I'm just going to share how I'm categorizing this in my mind. It's Agent Orange, the chairperson raised the issue of Agent Orange. It's a, it's another example of contamination that veterans who were here on Guam have absolutely sworn on, you know, oath, that they were spraying Agent Orange or other herbicides on Guam. And we also know that the Department of Defense has absolutely sworn that that has not happened, that that never happened, and they've completely denied it, and they've really actually entrenched themselves. And it's years later, but we've seen the Veterans Affairs Office grant claims of these veterans. In other words, they believed the veterans, that they were correct, that they are suffering from what they were spraying, from the results of spraying something on Guam. And so we're, the cases have increased over the years. We've got several cases that prove this. And so there was never an actual, you know, study of the composition of the land, whether it's got ready, I mean, sorry, effects of the Agent Orange. And so you've seen this recently. But recently, it was very interesting because the Department of Defense decided it was going to, you know, participate in this study. It had to be done with their parameters, you know, they had to agree to all the parameters of how it would be done on the basis where the fuel was supposedly stored. And then we came out with two results. And we were kind of lucky that the US EPA was involved and decided to send part of the results to its own lab as opposed to just the DoD labs. So we got the DoD lab saying none, nothing, no contamination from Agent Orange. And we had the US EPA lab showing potentially something. And then US EPA came out again and tried to do more testing, was denied access to the military base, so they tried to do access outside. And so we're kind of there now. But I always thought at that point that it's a strategic question for Guam, right? I mean, if we're going to be able to bear the burden or the cost of performing these tests ourselves, and if we're not, you know, do we even need the testing? Or can we take the results that we have already that show a presumption, or the results of the Veterans Affairs, and say, this is what we should go forward with and just, you know, go the other way and say, these veterans are not lying. That's what we believe and that because the Veterans Affairs believes, believes the same thing too. So what's next? I always thought we should be concentrating on the what's next. So if, if it's true that there was Agent Orange on Guam, what is the next step? And so we've, you know, tried to put our eye on, well, in other areas where the United States agrees that they had used Agent Orange, they are able to compensate people, similar to RICA, right? They're going to compensate where they agree that there has been radiation exposure. And I do agree with you that sometimes these are political considerations, and I suspect that's your objection to the Department of Energy. I mean, yes, it's your experience with them, how they tried to deny for many years and then tried to cover up the information, and you, we kind of had to fight them all along. And so I definitely hear that. And I, and I'm also wondering if, I guess we should know just what, if there is any risk. Now, this resolution does two things. It talks to the locals, you know, our local leaders, and tells us to do things, to prepare, to prepare a comprehensive strategy, a policy, a to research plan, mitigate the effects from leaks from the Runet Dome. And now that I don't disagree with because that's what we should do with the radiation we have now, right? We're, we're pretty sure there's radiation that we are suffering from and that if there's something we could do, we should do it. But I guess we're looking for, particularly with RICA, some real help with that through, you know, compensation, healthcare screening is really the biggest tool of the RICA. I think it's an increased screening for cancers. Cleanup is a whole other issue. And, and so I guess it's just a little, a big ask as to what we're actually going to do next if, if we're talking about radiation from the waters of the Runet Dome here on Guam. And I'm trying to figure out what is it that would be done next. I remember one of the first resolutions that we passed and when it first got elected was this resolution regarding the Fukushima, the nuclear plant. And then they had a, I guess the earthquake, you know, damaged the plant, then they had a tsunami. And so at that time, everybody was worried about radio, radiation from that plant coming to Guam affecting, we had, I think in that resolution asked all local things that are our fish be tested. I think Manny, you objected to this, but the fish be tested and the other things, you know, that we collect statistics so that we would be able to then do something. And I guess that, that the part of this resolution that, that just, you know, I would, I would bifurcate is what we ask ourselves to do and what we ask the United States to do. So ourselves, I mean, if we want to do these things, I think we should be specific as to who's actually going to do this research. But I think that, that's something that's harmless. We can do all those things. We can plan and we can try to mitigate the effects of radiation on ourselves right now through water or land or air. And then, and then the other more political question of asking the United States, or I guess we're going to ask Congress, or you urge the US Secretary of Energy to consider Guam when researching and drafting a report on the Runet Dome. I, I can imagine that there are political implications to that, and I'm not, I'm not well informed as to what the basis was for them demanding this study. And, and it's one of those things, I guess why I'm thinking, I guess I know you're hinting that there are very serious political implications of this, and I might tend to agree with you because, because all the other findings in the resolution show that it's been found to be full of contaminated materials, it's been found to be leaking already, it's been found to pose a risk to water, the marine environment. And now that's pretty much, you know, where as far as the Department... know, where as far as the Department of Energy has gone in 2013, it says contaminated, it potential does exist for contaminated groundwater from Runet Dome to flow into the nearby subsurface marine environment. And that doesn't make it clear, right? Mysteriously that it, you know, what what other parts of the water does it extend to? And then and then the United Nations says, they cite poisoning of waters in some areas from as an effect of the nuclear testing. And this code is not specific. And so I guess I'm just, so I can see why, yeah, if they've got these types of findings and they've they know this is contaminated material and if it's correct, and I, you know, see, that's not in here, and I wish this was in here because that's part of the stuff that I saw in the RICA material was the, you know, we on our side kind of show the wave, I mean, the water patterns and what is the likelihood of, you know, radiation being carried? I mean, just kind of then put those types of things into what we're going to send to Congress, kind of make it more likely that there are some kind of impacts to Guam already that we, you know, because of water patterns or our own testing or our own findings that or anything else that we can include for Congress to urge them to 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 really look more closely at it. But I guess, Mr. Celestio, I also wanted to ask you because you you had brought up this, your experience as a, what do you call it? The Inuituck cleanup, are they called cleanup?
Inuituck cleanup veterans?
Yes, the Inuituck cleanup veterans and that you have been advocating, you who have filled the dome have been advocating as part of that group to to be covered, right?
Right.
To be acknowledged that you were exposed to radiation.
Yes.
And I I can understand your your complete frustration that they are refusing to acknowledge that you were exposed to radiation by active, by standing in the waters of that dome, putting in the contaminated material that now 50 years later, or how many years later, is leaking and, you know, I want to talk about the contamination from that one. They haven't even finished talking about the contamination of the human beings who were who put the material into that dome and built the dome.
That's correct.
What is, what is your experience with this group? And I think if I remember correctly, I read something recently that this group has been advocating and that they had a hearing and that.
Yes.
What is the delay, if I may ask?
Well, there are two groups. There's the Inuituck Cleanup Island, and I have to clarify because it's confusing even, believe it or not, to Congress. Inuituck Atoll and the Inuituck Island. There's two. Congress is confused because the VA right now, if you go on Google, will say that we, the cleanup veterans, were exposed to low-level radiation. It's on Google, which really makes us angry. And the reason why it right reads that way is because they're quoting a report from Department of Energy that says that Inuituck Island is reading low levels of radiation, not the entire Atoll. Runet Island is in the north, Lojo Island is right above the Runet Island. We were highly contaminated. And so our, when in 2018, when I got invited to testify before the Subcommittee and the VA, I gave Harry Daniels, Ken Brownell, and John Bantam all the information that I had because I couldn't go. They went before Congressman Boast and Congresswoman Estee and a few others, but what had happened is they invited the DTRA. The Defense Threat Reduction Agency is what holds all the information pertaining to us, the cleanup veterans. They also brought the Department of Defense, and they brought their scientists and information and presented it to Chairman Boast and Ranking Member Congresswoman Estee. When they presented it, they practically said in front of the three gentlemen, you weren't exposed to high levels of radiation. But when Harry Daniels and Ken Brownell and John presented the evidence to them, this is what was told to me by the three. Congresswoman Estee said, someone's lying. For for here we have the supposedly experts holding the records, and here we are, evidence presenting, saying that someone's lying, we need to do another investigation. Oh, my God. So that delayed it, is delaying our bill. And then what happened was just coincidental, it was an election year, and Congresswoman Luria from Virginia and Congressman Stube from Florida got elected. The DTRA and Department of Defense ran to them and said, please introduce a bill to do a study on these guys. And they did. They introduced the bill, and we were opposed to that bill, but we lost. So now it's still in committee to do a study on the Inuituck cleanup veterans, and our bill is to to compensate the Inuituck cleanup is in hold, is in limbo with Congresswoman Ming. We're pushing hard. This month, in February 27, 28, 29, and the 1st, I got invited again. We're having a reunion in Springdale, Arizona. 200 of the guys that were with me are going to meet, and I haven't seen them since 1977. And it's kind of painful because out of 4,000 of us, there's only about 300 of us alive And so that delay is because of a study and a request for a study. That's where we are today, Senator, on that. So I'm sorry, it's very emotional to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess that's what I'm, I'm, I I agree with the intent that it seemed very harmless, let's just do another study, and especially if the Department of Energy is going to pay for a study already, let's let's jump in there and get a, you know, get a conclusion about Guam. But but I I'm suspecting, you know, in the case of Agent Orange, that the, when they control the studies, you know, the results are different, very different. And if we can't come up with our own side prior to those types of conclusions, we're going to set ourselves back quite a while. And I can see that with you, like, it seems so obvious to the rest of the world that the contamination, you know, happened, and they're delaying, and I and then the call for the study sounds harmless, but it it sets you guys back years while while, and I'm very sorry, but yeah, while while they pass away. So it's, it has real life implications, not just political, and so I I just want to share that I I share your concern that it's sensitive as to, you know, strategy and that we should come up with a strategy. And so at the very least, yeah, I would I would say what we do with the US should be different with what we do with Guam and that resolution that we did regarding Fukushima. We actually, I haven't seen any results of it, like on the government of Guam side. Maybe we weren't specific enough as to who's going to do what or, you know, how they're going to do that because we we have not seen the studies really, but as to whether there was contamination from that. So, yeah, and I see it again in the Agent Orange that, you know, they're pushing it to, they're pushing their results. So, all right, thank you again for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Duñez. Thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Kelly.
Sujus Massey to everyone who has been here and for for testifying when it's not easy to do so. As you mentioned, these are very emotional issues. They hit us very deeply, and we're talking about the health and safety and well-being of our community, of those veterans who were out there. You know, when I saw the photograph of you there, it reminded me about some of what I read, that even though the US knew and had had people be exposed to and pass away from radiation, they still sent young men like you out there who were there in their shorts and a tank top or maybe no shirt at all and their sneakers, like physically scrubbing radiation off of the ship or something like that. I mean, the the lack of of safety for you all and the lack of consideration. And so I just want to mention, there's been a lot that's been noted already, but certainly I support working with the committee. It seems that perhaps bifurcating this resolution may be the way to go, but I will work with the committee and and support a direction that doesn't impair, it doesn't hold back the work that you've been doing for nearly two decades. And perhaps saves that part where it says that there's work that we can be doing on behalf of our community here, that really we must be doing for these additional concerns. And I cannot express in words the level of gratitude on behalf of our community for all that work. You have very kindly, and Kathy has a bit as well, taken some time to to let me understand a bit of that journey, that it has been hard and it hasn't been easy. There have been many in the community that haven't stood beside you or supported these efforts, and yet you held strong and had the belief of what was just and necessary through that all. So for that, I thank you for that strength. And we must continue to find those ways to support your work as we can. I also look to what you have done, that path that that you and others have paved, and I hold it as inspiration. We're still at a time where we worry. We worry about our superfund sites, we worry about what's under our our former landfill, so many things that we're still contending with. And there are out there who, there are others out there who are likewise trying to protect the community, trying to safeguard us, and I know that in many ways, they must be inspired by that path that you have helped forge. So for those that are facing those similar challenges that you have faced over the years, the fact that you've been able to turn the community's thinking around, it speaks so highly of that dedication, but then also the possibility of of people understanding the efforts that are happening in many areas to try to safeguard our community. There are naysayers out there, there are those who may not understand the efforts, but again, you know, I just, I hope they look to your work as inspiration and knowing that we can get to places of justice and hopefully some recognition and consideration. So Sujus Massey, like I said, I know it takes a lot to come and testify.
Thank you very much, Senator Kelly. Senator Sabina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Robert Celestio and all the members of PARIS that have come out here today and providing their testimony and I and also Manny Duñez as well. So I think it's important that, you know, you were here today to show us, to highlight a potential unintended consequence of potentially compromising all the decades of work that RICA has done to incorporate the downwinders in RICA. And I assure you that I think our body as a whole is, does not want to do that. And so we want to ensure that your work is, stays, has its integrity. I think too, you know, you know, at face, it seemed like a good effort, but I do appreciate that, your testimony here, and we definitely want to support that, continue to support. I think also, you know, it's been a concern of mine about reducing the toxic burden on our people here on Guam and, you know, with the leaking of Runet Runet Dome, I think that is something of that we need to address as well. But yeah, I feel that there are ways that we can do that that does not compromise the work that you've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator. And again, we we thank you all, ndangulinasujusmasi, for your testimony and and for this good faith engagement that we've witnessed today. I just want to restate for the record my willingness to amend this measure to prevent any unintended ripple effects to other victims of toxic exposure and to ensure a united front from all of our stakeholders who are dedicated to this cause. And I sincerely hope that with the adoption of new language to request that the National Academy of Sciences and not the US Department of Energy be the outside entity to study risks that leaks at the Runet Dome may have on Guam, we'll be able to secure support of of all of our stakeholders. And we we do have a small window of opportunity to comprehensively study the causes and impending effects, to adequately plan our efforts to prevent or remedy any dangerous harms to the environment or our families, and to execute measures that remediate or mitigate these unwarranted and unwanted attacks on our ancestral homeland or settled home. So let's commit ourselves to doing something before it's too late, before the history of Agent Orange, PCBs, PFOS, and downwind radiation repeats itself. Let's put the effort in today so that 50 years from today, those who call home the Marianas, who call Guam and the Marianas and Micronesia home are not left wondering why mysterious diseases are rampant, why babies are born into a lifetime of suffering because of genetic mutations inherited through radiation exposure, and why places like ours, blessed with bountiful life-sustaining resources, have turned into poisonous wastelands that we can't even enjoy in the way that we do today. And so again, Sujus Massey, torus hamdu porifanatun midzu pagu. The Office of Senator Regine Bisco-Lee hereby concludes this hearing. Written testimonies may be submitted through email at senatorsbiscolee@guamlegislature.org or may be hand-delivered to our office at 163 Chalan Santo Papa here in Hagatna until the close of business on Wednesday, March 4. This public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 12:03 PM. Sujus Massey.